Meeting to order.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Wells?
Here.
Mayor Jacobich?
Here. Please stand and join us in opening prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work toward the common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is for the good of all members of our community. We also pray for our police and fire department and city workers for the safety in the work they do. We do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have one addition, and it's going to be item seven, or under section seven, item number five, which will be resolution authorized City of Ark City to apply for participate in the request for proposal for Kansas HRC Modern Income Housing Grant. We talked a little bit about this last meeting, but we need a formal resolution, so that's what's in front of you.
Okay, so new bit, one more item in new business. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah.
Under seven, number five, okay.
Correct.
I so move we approve the addition of the, in section five, item five, to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Well, it said section five, number five, but it's section seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Number five.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And so we already have the agenda approved, so, well, it is coming up. It is the National Night Out. So, we will, I'll, I'll read, yeah, come on up. We'll read it together here. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch annually sponsors National Night Out at unique nationwide crime and drug violence prevention program. Whereas the thirty-fifth Annual National Night Out. Thirty-fifth Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Arkansas City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas Arkansas City plays a vital role in assisting the Arkansas City Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Arkansas City and in supporting National Night Out twenty eighteen locally. And whereas it is essential for all citizens of Arkansas City to be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in Arkansas City. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program now, therefore aye. Mayor Daniel Kovach, do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, to join the Arkansas City Police Department and National Association Town Watch in supporting Thirty-Fifth Annual National Night Out. And do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October second, two thousand and eighteen, as National Night Out in Arkansas City, Kansas. I further call upon all citizens to consider attending or supporting the Annual National Night Out. Kickoff starting three o'clock from five to eight thirty Monday, October first, at Wilson Park in Arkansas City, Kansas.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we say bye.
Absolutely. I want everybody to come and spread the word. It'll be a, it'll be a wonderful time. Last year, we received twelve in the nation in our category, and that was up from twenty-something from the year before. So, we're planning to push this over the top and get up there in the top ten for sure.
Chief, how many we have last year? We had over twelve hundred, or?
It was a lot. That was one of the things that we, we figured out that it was so big, we couldn't get a good count on it. So, we're going to try to get a little bit better feel of that. Come early. We run out of food quick because there's so many people. A lot of good times, though, and a lot of good connections with everybody, so see a lot of people there.
Need more food.
And we, we increase it every year, and every year we run out, so it just, it's getting bigger and bigger. The SRS are doing a really good job, and they just keep raising that bar a little higher.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, we do have in our audience, Miss Kansas. First off, we want to welcome you at Miss Kansas twenty eighteen here, Hannah Clausen. And she's the first Miss Kansas to hail from Ark City in sixty-three years. And she's only the second ever. She's incredibly talented. She's talented in music, singing, and dancing. She's also caring, compassionate, and dedicated. She raised over twenty-five thousand for the Children's Miracle Network with her work and her dedication. She's tirelessly promoting, supporting mental health, and her slogan is mind ma, the mind matters. And she wants to help remove the stigma, stigma around mental illness. And she also works with various mental health organizations to help support their mission and efforts. She's making a generous contribution this year, sacrifice of her time and efforts. She's going to take a year off of school at Tabor College where she's studying psychology and music, and hopes to eventually have a career in counseling or therapy. And when she was informed that Miss Kansas wanted to have a kickoff event in another city, she insisted on having one here in Ark City also. And she shows Ark City pride, and so we want to present to her the key to the city of Arkansas City. So come on up, Hannah Clausen.
Never mind.
Yeah, it was so proud, it was exciting, it was all across the state. Oklahoma.
Okay.
Yeah, I want you to sing, sing and dance.
No, I just, I want to thank you guys for this. This means a lot to me. The signs, I haven't actually seen them personally, but I saw pictures on Facebook. There are the signs all across the city, and that's really exciting for me. My biggest goal, I just got back from this America, eight days ago, I think it was, yeah. So, I was there in Atlantic City for a couple of weeks, and like I said, I raised over twenty-five thousand dollars for Children's Miracle Network Hospitals. And that was my biggest goal for the year, was to be in the top five in that category. And I actually, being third place, spent over twenty thousand dollars, a lot of it thanks Spark City and the event that we got to hold here at the Burford in August. So, that was huge for me, and it was just my biggest goal going in was to make a top five, and I got second place, so that was really exciting. I just want to thank you guys in Arkansas City just for supporting me in that. So, thank you. This means a lot to me.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that opens City Hall.
Only between the hours of eight and five.
Eight and five. Alright, so next we have recognition of any other visitors, and so we do have two visitors that want to speak about Spring Hill Golf Course. Well, three, so. That's not Spring Hill Golf Course. So, let's see. I don't know which of you would like to start speaking, whether it's Monty, Eric, or Lee, or maybe I'll, come on up and you can let us know what you have on your mind.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity. My name's Monty Potter.
I'm Eric Pachala.
We glad.
This is our treasurer of the golf course. He is our secretary. I have some paperwork I'd like to give you all. And while we're passing them out, we did a video of our golf course. And I may try to comment as we go along. This is hole number one. If you notice, there's a lot of hills on our golf course. It's a very unique golf course.
Yeah, flyover is just talking.
Come on, the video.
You are never on flat ground Spring Hill Golf Course, which makes it a very challenging course.
Yeah, it says it's playing.
That's the guy that's doing the drone. It looks like he's flying, but he's really not. And if you notice on our greens, they're kind of brown. They're actually green as can be, but we just got done aerating, and that's why they look brown. This is hole number two, which is a dog lake to the left. It's one of our par fives. A very difficult hole to get on into to get eagles. Easy to birdie, but hard to eagle. There you go, see the clouds again. And you can see by all the tracks that we did get quite a bit of play. This will be hole three. This is our par three. It's about a hundred and sixty yards to the center of the green. And believe it or not, it's a straight shot method in the way, and that is one of the hardest holes on the course. Take my word. I've seen eight people tee off on that box, cannot hit the green.
It's a big file.
As you can see, we have a lot of trees, and if you notice the cart path we had, that was put in by the city years ago.
Machine where the old golf course has got curbs, the city got a new curb machine fifteen years ago or so, decided to try it out there.
Come on, technology.
Can't get it.
We can just skip the video. We can skip the video.
Okay.
And y'all have it. Just a short drill reply over. Sorry about that.
I don't think it's yours. I think it's our computer. I don't think it's your disk.
Okay, to start out, I'd like to say, founded in nineteen twenty-eight, Spring Hill Golf Course is proud to hold the title of the oldest mine hole golf course in the state of Kansas today. The course employs two full-time and three part-time employees, and has eighty-four members. Members include sixty-two singles, eleven couples currently. Member fees are paid by thirty-six people quarterly, or monthly. Four are paid quarterly, and forty-four are paid yearly. We have several different rates to pay golf out there.
How many of those eighty-four members are city residents?
Um, I didn't really get into it. That, I would say about all but probably about, all but about twenty, because we have a lot of members from Winfield, New Kirk, Blackwell, Burden, surrounding areas. And yet, last year alone, Spring Hill has hosted golfers from eight different states and several counties around Ark City. A family from Arlington, Texas has incorporated a round of golf with us in their annual family reunion for the last three years. The course has sponsored fifteen tournaments this year that are open to the public. One year and seven months ago, two days, myself and a few others were forced by necessity to assume management of Spring Hill Golf Course. We had no clue how to run a golf course, but we did not want it to close, so we pitched in and gave it a try. We started for the love of God. We had very little money or knowledge, but we made it work. We had two board members left over from the old board when we started, so we asked for nominees, and the nominees, and the members voted, and we created a new seven-person board. Then we hit the ground running, scheduling tournaments, fixing equipment. We had a very successful twenty-seventeen. Tournaments were, were full. Several new members signed up. Old members returned. Since we started, we've had purchased eight more carts to keep up with the play on the course and the tournaments. We've had added new benches, scorecards, new sponsor signs. We've had remodeled the clubhouse, built a cart pad for our carts. We had an ice maker that broke down six months ago. That was recently, a member of ours bought us a new one. We're waiting for it to come in for twenty-five hundred dollars. For six months, we was buying ice for our tournaments and for our customers when they come in to keep their drinks cold. In twenty-eighteen, we tried to work with the other golf courses in our area to schedule tournaments on different weekends and worked at times. We have had Family Day, Free Family Day to introduce new golfers to the game of golf. We also held a benefit tournament to help two railroaders to assist and provide for their family. But on the other side of things, we had to cancel four tournaments this year due to bad weather, which a big part of our income is due to our tournaments. We are asking the city for help of one thousand dollars. In hindsight, since we started one year, seven months ago today, our board members and members of Spring Hill Golf Course have donated a lot of time and money. We worked together as a team to add things to our course to make it to where we have golfers wanting to come back, and they do. So, in review, we've added eight new carts.
A total of twenty carts. Do that right now.
New scorecards, benches, ball washers, whole sponsor, a cart pad. We've got new office equipment, new members, old members that came back. Put on benefit for railroaders, Free Family Night to introduce to new golfers. We allowed a fireworks stand to help with finances. We have offered a discount for corporate employees throughout Cali County. GE, the City of Ark City, the Flower Mills, and so on and so on. And we were waiting on a new ice maker. All in all, for not having no experience in this field or running a golf course, we have done an excellent job, and we will continue to work hard to make this a golf course that people will want to come back to. Not to mention the variety of wildlife throughout our golf course. And hiring our tournaments and our course play, bringing golfers from other states and counties in Kansas, which also brings revenue to our fine city of Arkansas City. Thank you. Any questions?
Um, you have a balance in savings. Can you explain to us what that's used for?
Eight thousand. Just a second here.
Monty, here's one behind you.
I saved one for him.
We have a balance in saving. As of eight twenty-five of eighteen, which were our last board meeting week, I haven't done the tallying up for this month yet. We meet this weekend, so after this week's over, we'll do that. The savings account is due to a, we put back for a loan that we got. We had a lot more breakdown, and then we also had to pay taxes that were unpaid by the former managers, withholding taxes and other taxes. So, we had to get a loan to pay that because the IRS had put a lien on the property. It was going to shut us down. And then we had a lot more breakdown because we had to get another loan on top of that one. So, that payment is six thousand, right, had six thousand dollars once a year due to this month in September. So, I've got roughly twenty-four hundred dollars in there for next year. What I try to do is whenever I get a little bit of extra money, is I try to put a thousand in savings as much as possible to cover that loan. So, I have that five thousand dollars, or six thousand, excuse me, in September to pay it every year.
What's the balance of that loan right now?
What is the balance of that? I'm not.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's in savings.
No, 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 no.
But the balance of the loan.
Oh, it's right around twelve thousand, I think.
Okay, and so you're making six thousand dollar payments a year for that now?
Yes, yes, once a year.
So, you got two more payments, basically two more years of payments left on it?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Our golf carts are on a lease. They're six months on, six months off payments. So, they run from, till September, probably like May till, or April to September, on a six-month schedule, which is twenty-two hundred dollars a month. We got extra carts because we were running out of carts and tournaments and weekends, where we're having to call people, ask them if we could borrow carts. And at the time, we were doing pretty good. It's just gotten tough this summer with the heat and rain and the bad weather. We had to cancel a big tournament, which we lost about twenty-five hundred dollars of revenue on that one. The VFW tournament we used to hold is a two-day tournament, and it was last month, and it got rained out on Sunday. So, we lost all the revenue for that one day, which was beer sales and all that.
So, you lost four tournaments?
Four tournaments. And if you figure it out compared to what we do with all of our other tournaments, that's a revenue of probably about six to seven thousand dollars right there we've lost.
So, how much, I, I mean, I know you're saying a thousand dollars will they get, get you to the end of the year, or how long will they get you through?
Our goal is, we're hoping that that will.
Okay.
If not.
What we're wanting to do is assess it, get a thousand dollars, and then we'll look at our next month and see how we're doing. And if we need more, we may have to come back and ask for more. If we're doing good, then you won't see us.
If we don't need it, we won't be here.
Sure.
And you guys haven't come and asked for anything since you took over?
No. No, we had a, we had a stellar twenty-seventeen year.
The weather squabbed.
The weather squabbed.
Great weather.
And it wasn't as hot, it wasn't as humid, I should say. It's been a really humid year this year. It takes a lot of people, you know. At this time last year, I can show you my books here. I was sitting at about eighteen thousand dollars in checking, whereas this year I'm sitting around four thousand.
Makes a big difference.
And that's due to the weather and the canceled tournaments.
Oh, we took over with basically no money. And then we had bill collectors knocking on our door and tax people knocking on our door, and.
Are you caught up with all that?
Yes, yes.
But that's what the loan.
That's what the loan, yes, was, was the taxes. You had to get a loan to pay off. We had previous managers, one previous manager that was a long, long-term manager there, and there was a couple others in between that didn't pay attention to the taxes, so I guess they thought it didn't really mean nothing, but they got that notice in the mail to pay it. I don't know. But I, I figured when they call and say they're putting a lien on the property, or they're going to sue us, or take it out of our account, they're pretty serious, so. They're asking.
Well, you guys start in a hu, in a home, right off the bat, and I think you've done a wonderful job.
Did they call from Africa, or?
And also, we've had to pay. Not only are we paying the taxes from past few managers back, we've had to, we've had gotten, have to pay taxes from two thousand and fifteen that wasn't paid, that wasn't involved in that loan, that we've been getting curiosity throughout the year.
One reason I asked about a thousand dollar, I just wondered, because I know, because we talked to, well, we pinned down this road a little bit before.
Right.
And I know that the next several months are going to be your light months.
Right.
I know expenses are lower, but.
We're wanting to be self-sufficient, but we also want, if we need help, we want to know that it's there.
As I said, this is the city's course that they own, and they've got a real goal by their hands, beauty and, you know, the nature and everything. It's a tough business. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie, you know. Golf courses are struggling all over, but, you know, other cities are getting help. Now, I can't testify how they're doing, but, you know, we try to be as competitive as we can, and we make deals, like I said, we barter for a lot of stuff. All the office equipment was donated to us, a new predator, not, like, what's that, obviously, I'm talking, a predator, refrigerator, you know, stuff like that.
And that stuff that the board donated.
Um, air conditioner, and the concrete for a new pad was donated to us. People donate, like I said, we got a donation for a new ice press machine. It went down on us, and it was so old, and there's going to be so much to fix it, it wasn't worth it. So, we had to get a, we were just buying ice.
Sure.
And it got old, but one of our members saw us buying ice and asked what was going on. He said, well, the ice maker quit, so we're buying ice. He goes, well, I've got a lot of money that I need to get rid of before I die, he said. So, he said, uh.
How's it work for you guys?
Mike Cox gives a donation.
Yes. Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred. He asks us how much it costs. He says, right about twenty-four hundred, almost twenty-five hundred. He gives a check for twenty-five hundred dollars. Was positive in order, and it hasn't showed up yet, but.
Mike was a good man. Yeah.
Mike.
Mike is.
Mike's a one of a kind. He's, like I said, he's really grumpy sometimes, but he'll give you the shirt off his back, he can.
And a great golfer.
He said, when some people left, we lost our range balls. They all turned up missing for the driver's range. So, he's giving us balls. Other members, the five balls, give us balls, so we can have them for people to hit on the driver's range. We're trying. The equipment, you know, we do as much as we can as volunteer helpers, you know.
Okay.
Our two volunteer, excuse you, one more thing, I'm sorry, I'm battling a lot. Our two volunteer employees are seasonal only. Excuse me, our two part, the three part-time employees are seasonal only. One has already left, our greenskeeper. He went back to college, so he's no longer on our payroll. Then the two that work at the clubhouse through the weekend split the shift. And they'll be done. Once the weather changes, there won't be any more of them either.
So, you expect a thousand will get you through the year. So, what we need then from the commission is either a motion or some sort of direction for we.
That's what he said, either direction or.
I have a question.
Direction or a motion, or we move on?
I have one question. This payroll you have, is that monthly payroll?
Yes, that is a monthly payroll. It's paid, I'm sorry, that's paid twice a month, but yes, that is a monthly total right there.
And I also, in two, two weeks, we put up a petition, and just in two weeks, we've had over seventy, some people sign it for the golf course. Would you all like to see it?
Sure.
What is the petition for?
We have a lot.
Just a petition asking for.
Support.
Does support our golf course. We'd like to see us stay open. You know, it's members, it's visitors, it's everybody.
City manager.
Since we.
Do they, do they support if we raise our taxes as well?
Because eventually, we're going to have to, something's got to give eventually.
Don't, don't we donate all the water to them?
Yeah, they do.
If we get water for our course water, yes.
The clubhouse is our sole meaning.
Clubhouse is different, but the course.
We pay that, that's.
And we're allowed.
Part of our city bill there.
We're allowed twelve bay in a year, and we don't even use close to that.
Yeah.
Not even close.
No, they've, they've been pretty, pretty conservative with their water use.
Well, I make a.
Last year it all rained.
Well, I'll make a motion that. I make a motion that we give the golf course a thousand dollars, and then, uh, for this first go-around, and then come back to us if, you know, again.
If we don't have to come back, we will.
I second.
So, that motion and a second for a thousand dollar expenditure. Any more discussion?
So, I have an open book policy. Our books are wide open. If you guys would like to review them, audit us, or whatever you'd like to do, I mean, I don't, it's up to you, you know.
We don't hide that.
Like I said, it's open for the membership. If anybody else has to, you can ask, and they're allowed to see anything.
So, we do have a motion and a second, though. No other discussion, and so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you guys so much. We appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Say, don't let it happen again. I know, I know you guys, it sounds like you guys are doing it.
Thank you, sir.
Don't let it happen again.
I'm really impressed, I'm really impressed.
Try, we're really hard.
So, what we'll have to do, next year, pray for uh, better weather.
Yes.
We need better next year.
See, we had gray weather, it was just the humidity this year.
Well.
I mean, that's what it was.
Don't remember the previous.
Warm weather, yeah, just not have rain on tournament days, right?
Exactly.
It can rain all week, just on tournament days, gotta be nice.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
Could you remember, ready?
Yes.
Okay. That's exact opposite. I think it was dry all week and rained all weekend, a few weeks this summer.
Right, that's what, yeah, that's what their problem was, tournaments.
Do you have their petition? I haven't seen it yet.
So next mo- order of business.
No, we've got.
Oh, any other visitors? We have one more visitor. Uh. No, but trash pickup, you want to discuss? Come on up.
Yep.
We're, we're gonna. Yeah, okay, state your name and your address and tell us what you have.
Well, twenty-five, twenty-one, West Kansas. Uh, first of all, congratulations on your sale tax, good job. I, um, for whatever vehicle takes, I just didn't like the revenue, so we'll all go in the same direction. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, very kind. Good approach, excellent job. Uh, mine is on a trash pickup. Uh, the other day, I had that, I had one extra barrel with uh, two bags of trash in it, and left with a note saying, don't pick up extra barrels. And the, the question is, I mean, I understand, we don't want to take advantage of it, but we do pay more than even surrounding towns for trash pickup, and they don't have that caveat where they cannot, they don't want to pick up anything else, but it's in the, it's in the container. They don't, they, they don't like you to uh, uh, use it, uh, to use that container, but if trash can's that handled on, they'll pick up, they'll get a couple extra bags, there's no problem with it. And that's in, that's in Woodville, and County, and Derby, and, and Palm City. Plus, their rates are actually less than ours. So I'd like to address that and reconsider on this pickup, and I understand, we don't want to abuse it, but an extra couple bags in the can, I don't see that that is a relevant thing for how much it pays.
Mister Mayor.
I appreciate your concern, I'm not sure, I.
Was that the regular uh, city?
City, the city car pulled back, and there was, there was a down plastic trash came next to it.
Was it a city, city cart?
Car.
The city car.
The second one?
No, same, same car was a personal, it's just, just a plastic, plastic trash.
All right.
With him.
Well, I know it was the. Well, it's been discussed, and I believe, you know, in work session, we directed the, as a commission overall, we directed the city to just pick up what was in the cart.
Well, I, I, I'm gratification, or what am I gonna do with that extra bag? What am I?
Well, I called the city building, or the city personnel, have them come by and pick it up.
I know.
So I can call the city, we'll come by and get it?
Most time, if you call them, most know, that you have extra trash, we'll come by and pick it up.
Call ahead of time that you're gonna have extra.
We'll pick up extra bags, uh, but if we send a personal container, big one, we'll pick up the, we'll empty the poly cart, and if you have one or two bags, but some people abuse it, they'll have five or six bags.
And the, some, some people abuse it every week. We, did they put a hanger on your cart, though?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
We don't pick up, we don't pick up anything, we put an extra.
Right, because the extra can is what it is.
So probably put those in bins, set them up around, they would pick them up.
They probably would have picked them up. They probably would have left you a note still, but then they would have picked them up. We just, we've, we've told them that not to mess with the people's containers, because
I understand the abuse, but.
We've, yeah, well, not necessarily abuse, we've actually picked up cans that they didn't want us picking up before, and so we've thrown them away, and we've had to replace them, and, and so it's a, it's kind of a.
Well, I think they're going too far, but I believe that out there.
Right, but I'm just saying, we, we've had that happen, though.
Yeah, and we've had other people that were li- consistently leaving out a couple extra cans, just as, and so.
Yeah.
I understand.
And the drivers, and the drivers do pretty good job of knowing who those are.
So we said, uh.
I just took my place, business, threw my can there, and I got it picked up, but the point was, I don't have to carry it around as possible. What I'm paying more than the surrounding areas, and they are willing to pick theirs up without any advance notice.
So.
There's a bigger population in Derby, that spread it out.
Is that your house?
Well, they're private holders, so.
So, we're not in the county, not in the county, we're in Woodville, both Woodville and the county, wouldn't be.
And they're private holders.
They're private, yeah. County's higher than us.
County's not higher than us.
Yeah.
Well, uh, uh, these of us.
Waste connection is, is.
These, these of us are not higher, they're, they're almost twenty percent less.
I thought they were like thirty dollars a month, weren't they, down in county?
Well, let's check into it.
Fifteen, about fifteen.
Mm.
I don't think it's that bad.
Pretty, pretty much for water, fifteen for uh.
But we do recycling, though, too. We provide recycling, there's, and that does cost.
For that.
Well, you provide cycling, the two sorts yourself. You don't provide cycling containers.
No, but we, well, we have the tr- the trailers and the pickup, and we do for uh, commercial um, recycling as well for them.
Cardboard.
For commercial, for cardboard and so on, so forth.
You, you uh, provide the containers for recycling?
We do for some of the commercial individuals, not residential, though, no.
Or is it advantage to recycle or not?
The advantage of recycling is it, it diverts from landfill, but it is a higher personnel cost to do it. So honestly, it costs us more money to recycle than it doesn't. I mean, if we didn't recycle, it'd be cheaper.
Would you, at my place of business, if you provided the container, would you provide it for recycling? Would you provide it as a container?
Well, it'd be just for cardboard, I think, is all we do for commercial. Well, we'd provide you a container for comm- for cardboard.
We, we're, 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 we're carpet, but not that quantity.
Yeah.
I, I roll, uh, the.
The problem with recycling, China's not checking it anymore, and I mean, this is watching TV now, and that's the one from Wichita, all, all, uh, the usage.
It's a connection.
They would pay nothing for recycling, and now they're paying ninety dollars a ton of recycled material.
Yeah.
Well, thank, thank for your time, my concerns, if they had picked up, they'd have a problem with it. I put it in a container, if I'd use her, for next time off, maybe harder.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need, we do have a new sanitation supervisor, too, so we'll see how things go.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, William. All right, no more visitors, so we will move on to the consent agenda. So I need a mush- motion to approve it, or a motion to pull something out of it.
Well, I don't want to pull anything out of it, but I would like uh, city manager to uh, remind us what the number three is again.
Let me get that. Uh, what number three is, is uh, if we happen to receive um, a loan from uh, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, oh, no. What number three is, is there was a minor change in the amount of uh, interest that we had to pay uh, in regards to our loans, or the interest portion of our payments went down because we've been paying, prepaying interest basically on that loan, so uh, they redid the schedule for us to reflect those lower interest rates.
So we have a lower in- interest rate?
And the dates. Yeah, well, we don't have the lower interest rate, but the amount of interest payment is lower because we've been prepaying some interest on that loan, so.
Okay. Prepaid, Prince.
All right.
Prepaid, yeah.
So the interest rate here, before I sign, is still two point seven?
That's correct.
Schedule pays out for twenty years, starting August.
August, we've already made one payment.
Okay.
Well, I make a question, we uh, approve the consent agenda. Second it.
We have a motion and a second. We've already had our discussion, but anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, moving on to old business.
Consider resolution authorizing the city to purchase a two thousand and nineteen Jeep Cherokee Latitude four by four, Zeller Motor Company of Arc City, for not not to exceed twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars.
Uh, this is a carryover item from um, the last commission meeting. Uh, the commission asked for s- uh, some items in regards of what needs to be fixed. Mike or Bob, do you have that list of um, potential problems and items that need to be addressed?
Basically, the items that Mike discussed have already been fixed. Uh, the next items on, that's gonna need to be repaired is, it's probably gonna need a power steering in it for too much longer, and at some point, it's probably gonna need an engine. I'm having to put quarter oil in every two hundred miles, and it, even though the vehicle's only got seventy thousand, or seventy-one thousand miles on it now, uh, just about double that because of the amount of time it sits idling and stuff, so.
Do you use it in emergency situations?
I'm sorry?
You're using it in emergency situations?
Yeah, out, blocking traffic or.
Burns a quart of oil every two hundred miles?
Yes.
What, what did you get fixed?
You're talking about five thousand dollars for replacing an engine.
Yeah.
What did you get fixed?
Huh?
What, what was wrong with it, that you got fixed?
Uh, the front drive shaft for the four-wheel drive, that was earlier this year, we had to replace it, and then the, the cable that engages it. And then we had, uh, on the front end, had a bunch of work done on it, uh, and then here a few weeks ago, there was recall on it, uh, the rear stabilizer bar broke on it, it was recalled, and Zeller fixed it for nothing.
Uh, the vehicle you have right now has lights and sirens and kind of a rap with a logo or something on it?
No, it just has basic decals on it.
Oh, decals, okay, um.
Yeah, and it, but it has an amber light bar on it.
Okay, and so are you going to get new things to put on the truck? Are you gonna have them transferred over?
No. I'll just, I'll move the light bar and stuff over.
Okay, will there be a charge for that?
No, I'll do that myself.
He'll do it internally.
Okay.
So.
I think the difficulty that I'm having with it is, I understand what you're saying, I rode in it with you, and uh, you know, most of the citizens in this community.
You didn't get to go for the real ride, though. We didn't get to, we ran some of the levees, but we didn't get to go up and down the hills like I normally do, because it was too wet that day.
Right, um, but, you know, it has seventy-one thousand miles on it. I don't know that it's been well maintained, I don't know uh, why it's leaking oil or burning oil and.
Oh, and it did have uh, the valve cover for leaking on it, we did get that fixed, it was dripping down, and you couldn't hardly stand in there, the oil would burn on the manifold and.
Okay, but most of the citizens in this town are driving vehicles with a lot more mileage on it than that, and to have something that's fourteen years old with only seventy-one thousand miles on it, to me, would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about asking citizens to spend twenty-two thousand dollars for a brand new one, you're.
And I, and I did send out and request uh, for a good used ones, too, but the four by fours are just not out there.
Hmm.
Four-wheel drive capable, they're just not out there. I, I did that uh, back in July, even before I did the bid for a new one. Is a request from local dealers, if there was anything out there that would meet our needs, that had, you know, less than thirty thousand miles on it.
So if an engine were replaced, even at four thousand dollars, how long would the?
Well, it's about five to six thousand dollars.
Uh, how long would the vehicle last for then?
I don't know.
Another fourteen years?
I can say this. I doubt it.
Okay.
I, I sincerely doubt it, so.
Another ten.
And I wouldn't be up here asking if I didn't think it needs to be replaced.
Oh, well, yeah.
That's right.
I so moved.
I, I do the, I do the same thing, too. Uh, I drive a hot car to a hundred twenty thousand miles, and then my car I just replaced was sixteen years old.
What?
And I bought a good used, a three year, or a four year old vehicle that had fourteen thousand miles on it.
Mm-hmm.
And stuff, so.
Wow.
Any other questions?
No, but I will move that we authorize the city of Arc City to purchase a two thousand and nineteen Jeep Cherokee Latitude four by four from Zeller Motor Company of Arc Kansas City for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand two hundred.
I second it.
And that was in our budget that did retreat, right?
That's correct.
So, and, and I said, so something maybe to provide clarity is, uh, do we have an equipment replacement schedule that says this vehicle until this time?
We do.
And a maintenance schedule?
Yeah, actually, I think it was, what, two or three years ago, it actually come up, and I put it off then.
Can we? Can we see the equipment replacement schedule and maintenance schedule on a vehicle?
Can you email that out to me? Okay.
We need citizens that want to speak.
Okay, well, we'll get to them in a minute.
No.
I, I know, yeah. So.
Yeah, we'll email that out to the commissioners.
Okay. Uh, well, Mister McGee.
I have two questions. We have a seventy-one thousand mile Jeep that's got, looks like it's ready for the scrapyard, yet we're buying another Jeep? Why don't, I mean, that's, obviously, it's an unreliable brand of vehicle. I, I happen to know that we have a Jeep in the family, it's been nothing but a bunch of bucket of bolts. But we've got to put a ton of money into it, so uh, I would say we should probably maybe look at different brands. I know there was a Ford looked at, but there are other brands, and also, why are we buying a car from a dealership that is actively avoiding paying taxes on their, some of their sales here in Arc City, by having a location south of town? That seems rather problematic.
What's that?
I mean, I, I just, I want to point those two things out. I mean, I, I, I mean, if we need a new, new vehicle, then sell it, because apparently this commission wants it.
That's a good idea.
But obviously, the problem is, is these, these Jeeps seem to be somewhat unreliable. Why not a, a small pickup or a, or another brand of SUV that seems to be more reliable? I mean, we buy a lot of other Dodge vehicles and stuff, or Ford vehicles for the city, and, I mean, it just seems like, you know, if I had that much good problems with a car seventy-one thousand miles, I would be, I'd buy that brand.
Well, I really didn't have much problem with it till just last year or year.
Interesting, I mean.
Good point.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Just make your point.
You're gonna say something back here, Mr.?
My folks, it's like you're listening, but al- also, um, um, you're only getting twenty-two hundred dollars for the old Jeep?
Yeah.
Well, you know, on regular, it's that same Jeep with a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand miles, but they're getting seven hundred thousand dollars for it. So I think that we're losing money there, and I know it's just, I think, a little cavalier taxpayer money and stuff, but I think he's right about, don't get another Jeep, that, that kind of problem. But as far as needing a new engine, it burned on or leaked on?
It burned on, it wasn't leaking on, but we did say.
Well, it burned definitely on, that's definitely.
Like I say, it's just, yeah, I would say, probably about a hundred fifty.
That's a serious problem, part of it.
I, 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 I'm sure by the time everything else, and, and everything, I would, man, it's getting, it's relevant, but. Jeep's notorious for just not being able to hold up. I don't, or I would myself, just.
Jeep stands for just empty every pocket?
Yep.
I've never heard that before.
Just empty every pocket.
That's a Jeep owner.
I mean, I'm helping to test it, he's got four bangers with, what, ridiculous number of miles on them.
Kid by that.
Well, two or fifty, three hundred thousand miles on them, and they're ridden hard every day. I mean, we don't have a vehicle with less than a hundred thousand miles on it, because we buy your scraps off.
Yeah.
And we refurbish it and drive it for years. Well, I mean, the, but, but we, we buy only certain types of vehicles, certain, that's what's different.
I just.
Sure.
The bid for the.
I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
Ford Escape, it was, uh, was almost twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-three, seven ninety-nine, Ford Escape four by four.
For a thousand dollar water?
No, it's about two thousand dollars.
Go back and negotiate with them. Say, hey, they'll give us for twenty-four, will you match it? I'd rather have the Ford.
Yeah. We can't do that legally.
What, well.
Oh, you think we did that?
I already knew.
No, we can't, now we got a little bit.
All I can, all I can say, what I'd like to say is.
And also, on this vehicle.
They're all that way.
Yeah, that takes good care of it.
Government rebates and stuff is added in there, too, that brings the price down quite a bit. And I said, I really wasn't looking for a new vehicle.
Yeah.
To begin with, but price wise.
Don't.
That, that, that Jeep related is not considered a.
Twenty-four plus, and they got it to twenty-two, government rebates, that's taxpayer money.
Oh, this. Yeah, that was, yeah, that is, this is a higher end issue.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I have, I have one more question since.
From, all right.
Haven't you taken that uh, vehicle in for regular maintenance?
Yeah, yes, I have, since I've been.
Yeah, okay.
And where do we do maintenance for that?
Uh, Reiki's usually does it, or, or Zeller's.
Okay.
It had tuned up about a year ago at Zeller's, and they did an oil change and everything on it then, but for, when I, I get the oil changed, there were twenty-five hundred bucks on it.
So it's, it's not for lack of maintenance?
No.
Yeah.
Well, when the police department was, we were sharing it with them, there were several, several times that it would go three thousand miles past, and they'd serve.
Well, I mean, it's still getting maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, it's still this manner, and stuff, but.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's see, this is gonna be a voice vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries.
Thank you.
So, I'd ask, well, I'd like to see the maintenance schedule though, that was my thing, so I wanna see what we're, you know, if we have a regular vehicle replacement schedule, then I think we ought to follow it, whether we feel like it's, if there's a vehicle schedule, that's what you need to, to keep the budget, uh, consistent.
Well, like I said, three years ago, I think it was due, and I, at that time, I diverted, diverted some of that.
Sure. So I'd like to see that, and I'm sure we'll get that in the email, and I appreciate it, so.
Okay.
Moving on.
Thank you.
I don't have a printout, so I gotta get. All right, new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of real estate located at twelve oh three South G Street to Cynthia Weaver in accordance with the land bank policy.
Uh, this will be, uh, based upon the old land bank policy, we haven't implemented the new one as of yet, we only have actually one property in the new land bank, uh, set up. Uh, Cynthia Weaver, she's been contacting us for probably two or three months in regards to this property. Uh, what she's wanting to do, and I think we have pictures, she's wanting to place, uh, basically a, a tiny home on the lot. Uh, she will have, she understands that she'll have to meet all the building code requirements, which part, which requires a, uh, full foundation. And it's also in the floodplain, I believe, so she'll have to build it up to get another.
So how much higher would she have to build it up?
That's gonna depend on the.
Survey.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay.
What's normal, do you, do you have a normal?
I would think in that area, it wouldn't be very much, because really what that is, is just a really low lying area, uh, that drains badly.
And so when we get like torrential rainfall, floodwater's not that bad.
How come that's a floodplain?
Yeah.
How come it's a floodplain?
I think it's just because of that, just because of the ponding effect of the water.
Yeah, we got the dr- the drainage ditch is the, uh, mill canal. When it floods really bad, that's a low area, so all actually back, backwater will actually come up into that area, 'cause it's so low.
And she's willing to do all that, you know, to take care of and put this in.
That's what she said, she is, she's aware of that, that petition.
Yeah.
And again, what's our recourse if we don't see significant progress? Should we pull it back in the land bank?
We can, we can take the property back if she does not develop it in sixty months.
Which we have done recently. Sixty months? Or we're in the process of doing that with one land bank property currently.
Yes, one, one land bank property expired in February, and no improvements were made, so we're in the process of getting that tunnel back.
Um, but she's, I, I would be very surprised if, if this isn't done by s- end of summer, I'd be shocked.
Actually, it'd be quick.
Twelve oh three South.
She, she's, she's wanting to get done, she even called me about four o'clock this afternoon, asking what the status was, um, of this. So she's, she's excited and ready to go.
So that, G Street.
Twelve oh three.
And she's a county resident moving in town, because she wants to live in town. I have, I have a question, what, well.
Diebrecht.
Did you?
What would, uh, the minimum requirements be for her to put that on a s- wall fa- uh, foundation?
That'd be a permanent stem wall type.
Stem wall, okay.
She says she's willing to do it.
Yeah, and it's, and the anchoring system.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion, we consider a resolution authorizing the transfer of tile of real estate located at twelve oh three South G Street to Cynthia J. Weaver in accordance with the land bank policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion from the commission or the public? All right, seeing none, it's a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries, number two.
Consider ratifying Mayor Yipovich's appointments for planning commission and board of zoning appeals.
So we have, uh. Five applicants, Lloyd Cals- Colston, Ted Kadah, Mel Kuhn, Sue Lancaster, and Kaylee Lawson. And so, did you, did you come to the meeting because of this?
No, because of trash can, but also this.
Okay, did you have something you'd like to say?
I've got experience in those things that fail, so use your best judgment.
Okay. I was, uh, so, uh. Anyway, I did receive a call though, and I talked to Kaylee Lawson, and I was, uh, leaning toward recommending Kaylee. For, I didn't know Mel would be here, so I appreciate you kinda know, but, but.
Is there potentially any issue for the?
And that's where I don't know about that, so I'm gonna mention that, if there's not an issue, because at her, she really was, uh, energetic, wanted to get on the, there to represent more, uh, of, rep- as representative of people that are younger in age. And which is, I mean, I don't know if we can, we can say that on boards, I don't know if you can when it comes to hiring decisions, but, you know, to represent that idea of trying to get the younger people maybe involved, so, uh, would there be a conflict though, I don't know if that's even a possibility of, I mean, or.
Uh, I don't, I don't know that there's an inherent conflict, but there could be potentially a, a case by case conflict, or issue specific conflict, but that could happen to anyone.
What do you mean, Cameron?
I.
I didn't think it would be, but.
I mean, I don't think the, the mere, there's not a conflict in serving, period, but there could be an issue potentially that came up, that could be a conflict where someone would have to recuse themselves, just like you as commissioner, so to do occasionally.
Okay.
Okay. Well.
And she's the only person that reached out to me, I didn't know Mel would be here tonight, but I would, had been inclined to recommend, or to.
I, I think that would.
Appoint Kaylee to the zoning.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a conflict of interest with her husband serving in the capacity he does at the city.
Yeah.
Uh, the library board is one thing, but I think the, the Arc Kansas City Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals would really start a problem. And I had discussed it with others, just to make sure I was.
Cameron, what do you think? I thought.
She said not necessary.
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you said like what, like.
Like, uh, conflict, what kind of conflict, what it caused?
She could approve pay raises for all.
No, I mean, that, that would be a con- I mean, she couldn't, she couldn't vote on anything that would affect her spouse.
Yeah.
Um, that would have a, she would have a conflict of interest in that.
Couldn't be a day, dinnertime conversation.
I don't think Andrew doesn't normally, that's not his, one of the meetings that he's normally highly involved in, other than probably reporting something.
So you don't attend the meetings or take minutes or?
Do you record them?
With, with the recorder?
Can Josh handle that?
I'm Josh.
Okay. He's being volunteered.
I mean, that'd be one way to, to avoid any potential conflict, just have him not be a part of that board in turn.
And that, that was my understanding, that he wasn't part of that board, or wasn't the staff liaison to that board, um.
Well, I think the, you know, I appreciate the younger idea of, of getting young people involved. But I also appreciate the expertise of, uh, Mel stepping forward, saying that he would do it. And he comes to the table with a lot of experience. And.
Well. I would like to mention that, uh, we have Lloyd Colston and Ted Kadah that haven't been on the board before, have stepped forward and want to get involved, nothing against Mel, but, uh, if somebody new wants to get involved, I'd like to get them involved. Uh, Mr. Colston, uh, was a retired emergency manager from Oklahoma, so he has government experience in one way or another. And Ted Kadah is a local, um, builder. But we always want new people to give us new ideas, and nothing against Mel again, but I like to get new ideas in here. So, I would consider Lloyd Colston.
Well, here's what we'll do then.
Yeah, I'm.
So I'll start, I'll make a motion that we appoint Kaylee Lawson to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. And if there's a second and a vote, then we go, if not, then we move on and, so, there's my motion.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And any other discussion, uh, around?
I think it could set a bad precedent for the city if we allow employees' spouses to be on boards.
On that type of board.
On that type of board.
On a quasi judicial board.
Okay, but we do have a motion and a second, and with that in mind, we can have a vote. And so, is this, a voice vote, so it's a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
I have to go against myself, I think, I didn't, I didn't think, I mean, if that's, that's a bad precedent.
And there's nothing wrong with Kay- Kaylee whatsoever, I, I promise, it's not that, it's just, I don't wanna, I think it set a very bad precedent.
Yeah. And that's, that's fine, so then.
It's just, it's an open position, it's a lot.
And, and we wanna avoid any, any, any look of, of potential conflict with the, with our citizens. You know, we don't want them to not trust us in any way.
Next, Mel came to the meeting, and I appreciate that, so I will, I will nominate, or, yeah, I will nominate, uh, who I, I don't. I ratify appointing Mel Kuhn to the Planning and Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Now we have a, a first by me, and a second by Commissioner Ginder, any other discussion about Mr. Kuhn? Other than he had bad posts about our fa- our, our, our sales tax campaign. No, I know, I'm just. Yeah. Right, now I'm just.
Oh, I hate that word.
Yeah, so. What's your favorite small town other than Arc Kansas City?
Someone that I've ever lived in, and I'm kind of, uh, uh, kind of enamored, I thought that, uh, a person like me would have these opportunities. And so, and so.
Good, all right.
There you go.
So, any other questions for Mr. Kuhn while he's here and we're talking about it, or anything else you wanna add to the discussion? Seeing none, it's a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Mel's been approved.
Thank you, I'll win your hearts.
You'll do what?
I will win your hearts.
I'd just like to see some new people come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like new people.
Well.
Younger people.
One thing, just for those watching, and if you apply, it's good to probably make a phone call to, or come to the meeting at the application. That always seems like those who come always get appointed.
I, I understand the thought of younger people, but there's no substitute for experience, there is no substitute.
So, we're moving on though, item three, thank you.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contingent engineering design, construction, administration, and inspection contract Smith and Oakes of Arc City for the Community Development Block Grant Sleeth Edition Waterline Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Uh, according to Casey Tillman, who's our CDB, grant, certified grant administrator, who's here at the last agenda, says it's a very competitive grant. And if we can put in this contingent contract, might help us get the grant there, which makes sense.
So, if we put in the hundred and thirty thousand dollars for inspection?
It's included in, uh.
And, so, we, that is, that will help us get the grant, possibly?
He feels it will, because we're showing, I guess, a good faith effort by having a contingency contract in there to do the engineering, design, and inspection, and it is contingent upon award of the grant, which I believe is, that would be in January.
So here we're approving a contract that only becomes effective if we have the money.
Right.
If we get the money.
If we're awarded the grant.
If we're awarded the grant.
Yeah, that's, I mean, from the grant.
Right, right.
So this just helps that we're, I guess, shows that we're serious, we actually have a plan in place, and we're not just, okay.
Okay.
That's the part.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arc Kansas City to enter into a contingent engineering, design, construction, administration, and inspection contract with Smith and Oakes Inc. of Arc Kansas City for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Sleeth Edition Waterline Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. I second it.
Why is it race?
Yeah, she wanted to get that in, that's her.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
You gotta speak up, don't you?
We've had some discussion, were there any other questions or, or comments from the commission? Not seeing none, it is a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Number four.
Consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the levy of a one percent citywide retailer's sale tax, the healthcare sales tax, and related matters.
All right, what this is, is basically the repeal of the other two sales taxes, and puts in place the new one cent sales tax. And it must be approved today in order for us to get to the, uh, Secretary of State before October, or before, yeah, October one, so it can take effect January first.
Well, since we passed the sales tax, uh, I make a motion, we consider the, the ordinance authorizing levy of the one percent citywide retailer's sales tax, the healthcare sales tax, and related matters.
Second.
So.
Sorry Karen, did you want that one? No, ma'am, thank you.
She did, she did.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, pass for, uh, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the levy of a one percent citywide retailer's sales tax, the healthcare sales tax, and related matters. Any other discussion or concerns?
I have one more question, Nick on that, it, it, both of them go off in January?
Yes, well, they'll go off December thirty-first.
Okay. Okay. And then a new one takes hold in fr- in, in January.
Yes, January one.
Okay.
Just as we had expected.
Yep.
Okay, so, and this one's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanger?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
You may hear people.
Yes.
I think we should keep off all of them.
Yeah, keep them off. All right, and then now we have a new item, number five.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to apply for, specifically again, the request for proposal for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation regarding Kansas moderate income housing.
Uh, this is, uh, item, basically what this resolution states is that, uh, the city will help provide, uh, financing. And the way that we're gonna provide financing according to the grant application is through the issuance of special assessments. So basically, we'll issue the special assessments, the property owners, uh, will then, they'll be assessed on their taxes, and then they'll reimburse us for the improvements. Uh, this only takes effect if we're awarded the grant, uh, the grant application, I believe, is for four hundred thousand, the improvements are concerned to be in the eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollar range, that's what we're looking at, so.
And it's gonna be up at, uh.
Uh, that'll be, yeah, off of Skyline and Fifteenth Street.
Yeah.
And this is basically kind of a workforce, tight, three bedroom, two bath slab home, one car garage. Uh, it's the, the fifty-three, fifty-four units, I believe, uh, which are going desperately to be needed if, uh, Creekstone does move forward with their second shift. Cause they are busting them down from Wichita right now, and I'd much rather them live in Arc City than be busting them down.
And this grant comes, I mean, when's the, when will we know, aren't?
Then it won't be until January, February timeframe.
So, she said that the grant would be six hundred and the cost, our cost would be mi- nine hundred?
No, four hundred would be the grant, and four to five hundred would be the special assessment financing that we'd have to do.
Okay.
So, um, we'd have to issue basically debt, special assessment debt, and then mail five hundred thousand.
Okay, so, cause the total cost is nine hundred.
Is nine hundred thousand for the public improvements.
So we book, we, if we get the grant, we get four hundred for that, we borrow five hundred, and the residents pay us back.
Correct.
And then, if the residents don't pay us back, and the housing development goes.
Well, it's not necessarily residents, the owner of the property, so the developer would have to pay us.
The owner, right, the developer is paying us for that.
Yeah, the developer pays us for the specials.
And if there is no grant, then it's, we borrow nine hundred, and we get paid back.
No, if there's no grant, we do nothing, cause this is a but for, we're, we're not gonna proceed, um, unless they can bring substantial capital, um, to us.
All right.
We're, we're, we're not.
This is mainly to help him, help them out.
It's basically to help them out.
That's what I wanted to clarify, would be.
Correct.
And so, in essence, we're helping to get a grant to lower the cost of development.
Right, and the, and the, the, they're looking at only actually receiving about five to seven thousand dollars of profit on every thousand, on every home that they build, which is not much profit for a builder.
Okay. Well. I'm still reading through what we have, everyone else has a copy.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
I didn't, I ca- I got it early, we're in the city.
I read through this before, and, and, uh. We really need housing in the city. It's gonna have us make a commitment, but I think we can get the money back, so. I would move that we authorize the City of Arc City to apply for and participate in the request for proposal. Kansas Housing Resource Corporation regarding Kansas moderate income housing.
I'll second that. So, now we have a motion and a second concerning this resolution, any other discussion or comments or questions? Seeing none, this one is a voice vote. So, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh. Moving on, city manager updates.
Okay, I have a few updates, um, we've been running the water treatment plant now for several months, um, we've been looking at our cost to operate, um.
It's a facility.
The facility, water treatment facility, well, the plant portion, I don't think, you know, the facility, but, uh.
I, I'm.
On the, uh, plant side, we, we were paying, I believe, and I, I just talked with Rod Philo, I believe it was a dollar sixty per thousand gallons is what our treatment cost used to be. Um, as of the last two months, our treatment cost, uh, has been, uh, seventy-eight cents per thousand gallons.
And what did?
We, we were anticipating ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons, and that does include, um, funds for membrane replacement and, um, all the other costs that were associated in that ninety-seven cents. Plant personnel, electric cost, chemical cost, everything, so we're at seventy-eight cents for the last two months.
So, where does that savings come from, less?
Um, I, I'm not an engineer, I'm, I don't know, I think a lot of it comes from just, uh, we have, uh, fewer personnel run the plant. But we also, our water loss is substantially less as well, so we're not having to treat as much water. Our water loss in two thousand and fourteen, um, according to DWR reports, was thirty-one point six two percent. Um, and in twenty fifteen, it was twenty-eight, twenty-eight point seven seven percent.
Right up there with Puerto Rico.
Um, in twenty seventeen, when we started getting the new meters in place, it was, uh, twenty-one point nine eight percent. Um, from January, August this year, our water loss is at twelve point three four percent.
How many, how many million gallons do we do?
Uh, we do billions, I believe we do three billion gallons of water a year.
What is it, three billion?
Mm.
That's three thousand, three thousand million.
You can calculate it over the night. Hmm?
Three mil- that, but no, that's three million thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And we're saving, uh, eighty-two cents.
Fancy pound, it's here.
Two point five million a year, roughly.
Yeah.
In savings.
I'm hoping we're gonna make some payments.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, so anyway, we're, we're, uh, we're keeping close eyes, it's only been a few months, but, um, we have really good cost of chemicals
Yeah, paying, seven hundred and fifteen thousand.
Because we can see exact chemical usage, we can see our usage on our electricity side of things, we can see our personnel cost. And we can see daily usage on, on our chemicals and our electric, we can divide by thirty and, and come to the amount, so, um. You know, I'm not beating my chest yet saying it's a, you know. A hundred percent this is what it is, but it's looking pretty darn good right now.
I'm sure that'll go up and down, probably.
It'll fluctuate, it just depends.
Down.
I mean, you're gonna have.
Now, cost of chemicals may go up.
Yep, that's correct.
If we treat more water, the, the cost per thousand goes down, correct?
If we treat more water, um.
Cause we don't necessarily need more personnel, no more plant expense.
It will go down, but you'll have the offset in the chemical cost and.
Well, you, electric, probably.
An electric cost.
Yeah, cause of, right, water.
Right.
But personnel, correct.
If we, if we brought in more users.
You could see that price drop, it g- it could be pennies, but pennies add up.
Yeah.
Like I said, our water loss, um, a- according to Rod Philo, uh, through this year is twelve point three four percent.
Okay.
Which is right where we should be.
It's good news.
That's national standards?
Yeah, that's state standard, they, like I see them, ten, be, t- t- anywhere from ten to twelve, twelve, fourteen somewhere percent loss.
State standard.
Like I said, we're at thirty-one percent at one point, twenty-eight, twenty-ones, we've, we've been in the twenties pretty consistently.
Where's that first number from, thirty-one point six two, was that?
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen? Okay.
But we had twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, I mean, it's fluctuated, the water loss has, o- over time. But in the last two years, like I said, in seventeen, it was twenty-one point nine eight, and then eighteen, year to date, it's tw- twelve point three four.
Cool. That's good.
Alright.
Sorry.
Are we talking in much less water?
Um, no, I, uh.
So, we're not talking, yeah, it's water, how's it going, more?
I'd have to, I'd have to look, let me, I don't, I can't tell you.
Do you have some of us just because of the back washing?
Yeah, our, uh.
Water pipe is very useful.
Yes, we'll, we'll take as less, we'll take as less for back washing, you know.
Water loss.
I'll leave tomorrow.
I'll probably look. I know we're selling a lot more to, um, Creekstone. We're selling, I think, of anywhere from a million to two million gallons more a month to Creekstone. Camp back has increased, I think, ten, fifteen percent as well, so our big, two biggest users have increased, which have offset that water loss. Which has helped on the revenue side, but of course, the way our revenue structure is.
It can't offset the water loss.
N- no, no, I'm, I'm.
The water can account for the water loss. And was the water loss ever actually there?
Yeah, we have, we have some issues.
Uh, some issues, but when we replace all the water meters, they only account for a few percent. And the water plant will not account for any, uh, water loss, or less water being lost, that that number is distributed. The metering system has changed, plus you're meeting the water in, coming in the meeting, metering the water outgoing, so you're much better control issue. On how much water is being used, in the past, you have that control, you added, you added control check and balance. Which is much more accurate, in terms of how much water you're actually using and of, and so.
Well, point is that.
If, if your cost per operations, that's a, that's a huge step.
Yeah, the cost for operations is lower, and there's less unaccounted, there's less unaccounted for water, whether it's.
Losses, twenty percent less.
Loss. That's, okay, fine.
Yeah, I mean, so maybe, maybe it wasn't being made right, but we, we, we know where it's going now, so apparently, and it's working, working well for us. Anything else?
What it, nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
We also have, um. No, you, you don't have that cost of what it was before, prior?
Well, yes.
Hmm? You don't come up?
If you want, uh, when we did the, uh, radio lane, when we did the HA five, high density mineral bond. It included the striping in the contract, the pavement markings, and we were able to get the cost down on that. And we used the federal fund exchange dollars reimbursement to pay for that. So, because it was less, we had, uh, same strikers go out and scrape, uh, stripe, excuse me, stripe Summit, uh, from the bypass to Skyline. And we also had them do East Madison from the bypass to the Country Club Road. And I've got quotes from them, and on the one for East Madison, it was over eleven thousand dollars. But they included the four inch white edge lines, uh, along Crestwood and Summit Acres, which has curves, so they didn't need the white markings. So, I went on GIS and used the ruler and estimated how much less that would be, which I came up with under ten thousand dollars. And I got the invoice yesterday, and it's ten thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. So, it's six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents more than Nick could approve, so I'm asking the mayor of Copa on this.
Ex- explain again, explain again.
Yeah.
You went in and checked how much that would cost to stripe.
Right, they gave me an estimate of eleven thousand some dollars, but then included the four inch white edge lines.
Right.
That they put on each side by the shoulder, uh, in Crestwood and Summit Acres. But those are curves, and you don't put white edge lines when you have curves, cause that, the curve's the final road, you don't need white edge lines. So, I had them go back and subtract that out, well, I figured it's gonna be less than ten thousand, but when I got the invoice yesterday, it's six thousand, four hundred and what?
Six hundred.
Six hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-six more.
So, but this all came from, they were striping?
They were striping radio lane.
Radio lane.
And.
We didn't have, we needed to spend more.
The cost came in less, and we had the federal fund exchange dollars to use to get reimbursed, so we had them do Summit and East Madison. To help use up that federal fund exchange dollars.
So, how much? So, how much more are we actually spending than what we originally approved in dollars total? Cause you said the one was lower, so we did other projects, are we spending more than?
I, I don't have the dollar amount for radio lane.
Okay.
Uh, because I was gonna just address the additional work we had done.
Okay, I, so what I'm curious about, I don't.
I think it was offsetting, if I, if I remember right, because we didn't do the asphalt on the, or the, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, uh. When they gave us the, the quote for, it was subcontractors to Red Section, the ones that headed.
Yeah.
And when they figured the pavement markings, they figured in going out to Summit, out in Fifteenth Street, and then Eighth Street on both sides, and then Fourth Street. But we didn't have them put that mineral bond, we had them just go straight from the edge of Fifteenth Street to Summit, so we can get a comparison over the years.
Right.
How the bond compared to the, uh, resurfacing we did in twenty sixteen.
So, we took that money that was allocated and went somewhere else.
And use it for that, to help use up the federal fund exchange dollars we did.
So.
Sounds like it was a break even.
So, yeah, it sounds like a break even, that's all I, that'd be my big concern, are we paying, are we approving more spending than we did before?
Yeah.
If we're not, I don't really think necessary.
Well, but it, it's necessary because over my approval.
I know, but I wouldn't care overall unless, if, I mean, I'd care, but I don't. If we're spending the same amount, we're getting more work, or work done in different areas, I'm not too, I'm not gonna.
And we've got a lot of compliments on those.
I'm not gonna come in.
Oh, yeah.
I will approve.
But basically, I need authorization.
I'm not gonna kick over chairs or anything.
I will authorize or approve the extra six hundred and fourteen or forty-one dollars, was it six fourteen or six forty-one?
Six forty-one and sixty-six cents.
I authorize six forty-one and sixty cents to be approved. Sixty-six. Sixty-six, I'm sorry. Did I have it right, six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents approval for the striping, extra striping. I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, we, we have one, last time, we have our meeting on Thursday at noon, uh, in regards to the, uh, ag business building I did meet with the tennis association. Um, they are going to be looking at, uh, replacement of the floor at their cost, um, so there's some grant opportunities potentially for them, they're gonna be looking into it. As far as the walls go and everything else, um, we have a bid, I believe, for ninety thousand dollars to do the ceiling and the walls with the metal. Um, which would finish out the building. And pretty much it'd be good for another thirty, forty years, probably at least, o- I mean, honestly, on that building. And, uh, we are trying to get a second individual to give us a price on just doing the roof itself, and then us buying the metal. And then, uh, we doing the walls, and them doing the roof. The roof is what the complicated part is, cause it's just gonna, it's gonna take a little bit more expertise than what we have to try to install that metal paneling on the roof. So, that's where we need the experts on the walls, we can do pretty much all that. Um, but with that, uh, Kathy and I are looking at the budget, and we'll try to figure out what we can do. Um, if, if we can absorb that in the full ninety thousand, I know we can do a portion of it, we're just gonna see what we can do on the full ninety thousand.
I have a question on the tennis court, can we get that thing looked at where it's a multiple purpose besides tennis, where it won't scar up, and where Tony can have a better ch- shot keeping it up?
Um, the surface for tennis, the only way, the only way it's gonna be satisfactory to the tennis association, it's gonna have to have grip. If it has grip, then it's hard to clean, that's, that's the end-all, I mean, it, it just is. Um, and it's gonna stain, it's going to cause issues, but, uh, tennis association have been very vocal. And I guess there's even a petition going around the high school right now about saving the tennis courts at the Ag Building, so, um. I would like for them to, if they want the tennis courts, they pay for them, and that's in the agreement as well. It's, two thousand seven's the last time that they did the courts, I'd like to see the, the whole floor scraped up though, um, to let the concrete dry out. It's, it's had so much moisture, and the moisture content in, in so high right now, that it needs to basically have about a month to dry out before they put a new coating on. I don't think they've ever scraped the coating off completely, and then put a fresh layer on, I think they've just been putting it over, 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 um, over time.
Do our cities, do other cities our size?
No.
Have indoor tennis courts?
No.
No.
So, they would have to do what everybody else does, if that's a big deal or a threat?
As far as, what do you mean, everyone else up there?
Play, have soccer, and then that.
Um.
Have weather.
Yeah, there was no tennis courts available, but I think that's gonna be difficult. We can still use the facility, uh, if we, we could do multipurpose though, even with the grip, it's just gonna be from the, from the stains and, and everything else, just gonna have to keep it up. It's just gonna look nasty.
Can we?
Over, with time, it will.
Is Tony looking into different coatings?
Well, we looked at, we have a bid right now, I think for sixty thousand dollars, which will sand it, put a hardener in the concrete, and seal it. Um, which basically will last for forty years. And you'll never have to worry about it, but it's, it, the tennis use, the tennis use would go away, but you could still, you could still play other things, activities in there. Just wanna be, there won't be any striping on the ground, won't be anything like that.
If the majority of the damage that happens to the walls and the ceiling and insulation happens because of the tennis balls and the tennis rackets?
I wouldn't say a majority, we have to think about the age and the condition of that building, it's forty years old, it's a pink palace, it's, it's had car shows in there, and cars have backed up into the walls. We have I Y Q that runs into the walls, and the walls are, um, thin, it's aluminum, it's a very thin aluminum. So, if you go in there, push on the panels, I mean, they were, they deflect really easily just by pushing on them, so it doesn't take much to dent them up. If we look at the heavy duty steel paneling, like we're looking at twenty-six gauge steel paneling. They, if they hit the ball a hundred mile an hour, tennis ball, it's gonna take an heck of a lot to dent that, uh.
Thanks.
Um, and the ceiling, that'll be eliminated, the ceiling was, a lot of it, the holes being punched in the ceiling, uh, were done by the tennis, um, players over time. But that could be from a variety of reasons, you know, just errant ball, it could be from kids improperly supervised and hitting balls up there, I mean, there's a lot of different reasons why, um.
Right, if they have a key to the building, and you never know who's in there.
They're suppo-.
Probably reverse the city for the damages that they did.
Well, and the, they, there used, there used to be a much better agreement and arrangement with, um, the city. And a much better documented, tracked usage, um, than there has been in the last several years. Uh, tent, indoor tennis association was, was prob- you know, I'm, I don't wanna be misquarrelled, but it wasn't managed the best, in the best way it could have been managed. And so, uh, in the past, they did a really good job of keeping track of which court they used, for how many hours, and what day, and what month, and they had a really good record. The other issue we have, the utilization would probably go up if we had a much better, uh, reservation system for that facility. Uh, because right now, it's, it's on a piece of paper, and we have access to it. If we had an electronic reservation system, which I think there's some out there free, I believe, isn't there Andrew, some, very low cost? Well, basically, it's a calendar, I mean, we just need some sort of calendar that's synced up, where they can input when they're gonna be in there, when our events are gonna be, and just try to juggle that calendar better. Um, but if they're paying us for the usage of the facility, um, for the time they're using it, I think that's great. The other difficulty that we have, and the other issue we've had with the Ag Building, is we pretty much let every nonprofit have it for free. The other difficulty that we have and the other issue we've had with the Ag building is we pretty much let every nonprofit have it for free, and we don't charge them. And I think that's something we need to at least charge them something to use the building, I mean, um, uh, like Car Show has it for three days. They do give back to the public, but they don't pay for the building, you know, they, they, they should be able to pay a li- little something for the usage of the building.
We'll have a work session about this on our Saturday, so we'll.
Yes, we will, yeah. So it's something we need, I need to get direction on that, so it's something to keep in mind.
That's why we're meeting on the Thursday, so there's a lot to get up to discuss, anything else for the updates?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Alright, a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.